Uh, study session at four fifty-five.
Finance operations and budget.
These two, right? Best grant, too, right?
Well, the reason we're here is because we wanted to give you information on the EMO. I've got two gentlemen that are taking leave. They've had a lot of meetings. You guys have attended some last Tuesday. They did one on Saturday. And their goal today is just to give you other information to show you where we're at. We're getting ready to put the EMO out. I believe we have a meeting tomorrow on Wednesday, once we meet the community. And pretty much, we're pretty close to the EMO being put out. Am I correct? We have to get it approved by CDE. You've already done some of the processes. And again, I don't want to take all your reports. So I'll just turn it over to Sean and John. And can you just update them on the process, where we're going, when we're going to put it out and so forth?
Sure.
Yeah. We'd like to summarize what we've been doing, especially since December 4th, when we had our general information of public meeting, all the way through today. I think I want to begin by saying that when we got together as a staff, working with Dr. Abrego, we decided that our intentions for this process were to inform and engage stakeholders, all of our stakeholders, to lower anxiety, raise trust, and facilitate wise collaboration. The December 4th public meeting was our first opportunity to do that. We had a goal going into that meeting to have 220 guests, stakeholders from across the district. I'm happy to say that we exceeded that goal. Somewhere between 240 and 250 people were there that night. I want to thank the family liaisons, the principals, that played a major role in getting parents that don't normally attend public meetings to attend. I also want to thank our transportation department for providing bus transportation from the schools. Because what we realized is that many of our parents are deeply loyal to their school. They don't necessar-- they never necessarily been to the high school. And so to get in their car and drive across town to a school they don't know, to meet people they may not know, we thought was a very big ask. The family liaisons working with the principals identified ambassador parents, prepared them for the meeting. And then we, in some cases, had buses pick them up and take them to the high school. That all helped grow the participation in the event. In your stack of papers, you could see the blue-colored document was the information packet, in English and Spanish. Here I want to thank our printing services under a very tight deadline. Uh, no, the, sorry, the larger packet. That includes the draft EMO, excuse me, the draft RFQ. It includes a Q and A, or frequently asked questions. And on a very tight deadline, the, our print office turned that high-quality document around and had it for all of our stakeholders in English and Spanish as a reference for that, that meeting. And I have to remind everyone that there was a lot of anxiety going into it because we had just heard from the state board and there was a lot of uncertainty. So having access to information really helps lower anxiety. And I also want to thank our legal counsel for answering questions and responding late at night to make sure that our FAQ was accurate. And so I'm grateful for that support.
John, can I just throw in also that a lot of the information that we're doing here, for those of us that attended the meeting with OCR, this is a lot of documentation that's going to serve us to help them to, to, as, uh, document. So these are also being saved. We're also having another, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Well, we're archiving all of the information and documenting all of the interactions with the media, all of the publications, all of the media posts for CDE, for the State Board of Education, and for the Office of Civil Rights. So we have an employee that's focused principally on that task as we, as we move through this process. I also include in your packet evaluation forms. At the end of the event on December 4th, the gym, or excuse me, in the auditorium, we asked our guests to complete evaluation forms. We probably got sixty or seventy, something like that, back. All that data is here. And I really encourage you, right now, if you might just take, take a look at some of these questions. On page one, "The State Board's decision, decisions concerning Adams 14 were clearly explained." And as you can see, we have a preponderance of guests that said strongly agree or agreed. The second question is, "The next steps that Adams 14 is taking were clearly explained." Once again, a preponderance, agree or strongly agree. The third question, "How can I participate in the proc-- how I can participate in the process was clearly explained." Strongly agree and agrees a preponderance. And this is the trend throughout these questions. The final question, number four, was, "As a result of tonight's meeting, I'm more likely to be involved in future meetings." So I think this is, while this data is anecdotal in nature, I believe it's an indication that we're moving in the right direction in terms of robust inclusion and engagement. And at the very end of this document, you will also see comments, suggestions, and questions that our guests wrote out for us.
Question, they have a question. When you say, "When are you available to participate in meetings?", did you give them a time? Or you just said morning, afternoons, evenings, and nights?
What we did was, we gave them all the days of the week, weeks, and the, and the times of the week, and they circled what was best for them. And then we recorded what was circled.
Tuesday night was the most common time. Everybody was available.
Can I ask, I, I agree, the turnout was phenomenal at the first meeting. How did, what was the turnout like on Saturday?
Sixteen, well sixteen, every member.
That's great.
Sixteen.
I'll go ahead and move on to talk about Saturday, December 8th. That event was slightly different in nature. The event on December 4th was primarily informational in nature. So we were providing information to our constituents and then answering questions. What we're trying to do, under Dr. Abrego's leadership, is move us into more of a deliberative mode, where we're not sitting in a polarized environment, us folks up on the stage and our public out in the audience, but more in a circle-type environment, where we're all seated together and we're all equal partners and having rich discussions about complex issues. And we started our day on Saturday with a lecture, a presentation, a very dynamic presentation by Dr. Martine Carcason of the Colorado State University Center for Public Deliberation. And we wanted to explain that the challenges that we have in Adams 14 are not unusual challenges. These are issues that our institutions across the country are struggling with. How do we manage difficult questions, particularly when there's different values involved? When we have lots of stakeholder, stakeholders, and they, they value different things. And we can get caught up very quickly in finger-pointing and blaming and arguing because we have different values. And at the end of the day, we're actually all concerned about the same thing, and that is our kids. But we have different ways of valuing how to get there. It was a great presentation. And we also learned about, not only the concept of a wicked problem, and I, and I'll just say for a moment, a wicked problem is a problem that does not have a single solution. So for example, getting a, an astronaut to Mars and back is a very complex technical problem. Very complex. But you get, you get the right people around the table, and they'll solve that problem. There's a whole nother class of problems called wicked problems. There's no simple, there's no technical solution to it. Affordable housing, low income, affordable healthcare, racism. Funding public education can be a wicked problem. Because while some people want to have really nice, state-of-the-art facilities and highly qualified teachers, at the same time, they want low taxes. And they want them both at the same time. And that's when it becomes wicked in nature. So how do we, as a community, begin to have meaningful conversations about very complex problems that are wicked in nature? That was the gist of the presentation. And after we all experienced the presentation by Dr. Carcason, we had an opportunity to deliberate, to break up into small groups and to have rich facilitated conversations about, in our case, the RFQ process. And that leads me to the document that you have in front of you with the questions. You should have a document entitled "Final Questions." And these first four questions are the questions that the seven small groups, groups of eight to ten, deliberated about at each table. And they worked through those questions as a group, exploring the pros and the cons, the advantages and the disadvantages, the agreements and the disagreements. And as you walked into the boardroom today, you saw in the hallway all of the paperwork that those subgroups recorded, all of their comments, their ideas, and with, along with photographs. So I, I encourage you all to take a look at that as you leave the boardroom tonight. Because it's really quite impressive. And we had two PowerPoint slides going at the same time, English and Spanish. Our translation team did an outstanding job at translating. We had anywhere, I think, I think we had ten members of the community that were Spanish-speaking. They had their own table. It was quite impressive. Great conversation. And for an hour and a half, all you heard in that room was conversation, civil discourse about a complex problem. It was rich, it was exhilarating, and, and again, this is the kind of dialogue that lowers anxiety and raises trust. I'd like to take a moment now, and can you cue the video, Monica? This is a video giving you a taste of the event on Saturday.
When you look at a problem as a wicked problem, it changes the way you talk about it. And it helps you have these better conversations. Once we understand kind of how our brains work and how our institutions are not working that well, we can start making the changes. That, once we start seeing things as wicked problems, we can, at least at the local level, start making the kind of changes that we need. The problem is, we want lots of things, and they don't fit together very well. The best conversations are innovative conversations, that we get creative and we figure out how to kind of transcend, to kind of go beyond attention and find new ways of doing things. We actually started these meetings with 300 people in the room with a river, right? Saying, "No one in here hates the river," right? There's no one that just is anti-river. Certainly people that would rank these differently and kind of, you know, hold importance differently. But it's not because they reject the importance of any of them. If you had to pick three of these to be more important to you than all the rest, what three are they?
I think I'm here today because there is a unique opportunity for this community to decide its own future in regards to the schools. And I think the district has put together a process that has really provided an opportunity to do that and want to make sure that we are, are part of that.
We all, in a lot of ways, have the same values. What makes us different is how we rank them. And when those values are in competition with each other, which one's more important? So that becomes, the, the notion of wicked problems is, instead of kind of attacking each other for not having a value that I hold more important, we have conversations about, how do we negotiate the natural tensions between these values that are important to us?
I'm a principal at one of the local elementary schools. And so it is important that, as I am guiding the stakeholders in my, at my individual site, that I am informed and that I am part of the larger process.
Environment and the economy have always been kind of this tension, right? But something like green jobs transcends that tension. How do we work together to make them fit better?
I'm just here to inform myself, as well as my community and my parents, of how important this is, and why it is very important to participate in these community meetings.
It's really for the EMO to have an understanding of our community. It shouldn't be an obligation or it shouldn't be a requirement for them, but it should really be a desire to have an understanding of the community and the culture of it, and the culture of our schools and our students. They should take that knowledge and reflect it into their actions, rather than just saying that they understand, but really seeing that implemented into tangible ideas. And there should never really be an echo chamber in terms of that leadership either. It should always be open.
Yeah, so that gives you a sense of the, of the atmosphere. It was very positive, it was very upbeat, and, and by the end of the meeting, I had a handful of more applications of, from people that wanted to participate in the process. I want to just emphasize that when we're talking about public participation, public deliberation, collaborative decision-making, it doesn't mean that we're going to the public and saying, "Here, you make the decision." There's a spectrum of engagement. And at one end of the spectrum, it's simply informed. We're going to give you information. The other end of this spectrum is empowered. We're going to give you the decision to make. Typically what happens, and almost certainly when we're dealing with elected officials and boards, we come into the center, where we consult, and we involve, and we collaborate. In most cases, then, after the consultation, after the involvement, and after the collaboration, then the decision goes back to the board. But they are now making a decision with a very rich archive of information that comes from the community. And what we, what research shows, tells us is that when we have these difficult, complex questions that, that tend to get anxiety up and tend to pit one group against another group, if we do it well, we actually build buy-in and we get better, sustainable decisions. And I, just as a, to close this, this segment of the presentation, just about an hour ago, I got a call from Channel 7. And Deb, I forget her last name, on Channel 7. She, she, her comment to me was, "I just got off the phone with CDE. They said you're doing amazing community engagement. What are you guys doing?" So the word has already begun to make the rounds, that we're doing something differently, and it's very authentic. And as you can tell by the video, it's, uh, it's giving our community, I think, hope about a new way of doing business and engaging them.
And to that point, Alyssa Pearson from CDE was there Saturday morning at our meeting as well. I had a chance to talk to her for a little while. And she was so happy about this process and how much community engagement we've been having. And kind of was saying, "Whatever you guys were looking at, let us know. If you feel like this is being rushed, let us know, and maybe we could work around the timeline. If you need extra time." They're seeing that we are doing the community engagement. We're putting all the pieces together in a positive way. And they want to make sure we continue that, to make sure we're going through the correct process to get the most highly qualified partner, EMO, in here. So nothing but positive feedback from both Lisa Medler, Alyssa Pearson, everybody from CDE seems to be happy with the process of what we're doing so far to this point.
So Sean, what, what's the current estimate on releasing the RFQ now?
Currently, we did push, we were going to do, look at Thursday, and now we're probably going to try and post that Friday.
Okay.
So I think that this RFQ that should all have, we just printed off about 45 minutes ago. It is the most recent, up-to-date RFQ that we had, that has that timeline on going out 14. We still have the same end date of 12/18. We kind of moved around some of those dates. Still feel pretty comfortable if we're continuing to be on pace with that, that we should be, be able to maintain that. You can see kind of February 1st, 4th, 6th, and 7th, all seem kind of back-to-back-to-back. The 6th and the 7th are the interview, tentative interview dates. So you can, have that comment, have that feedback. Is that too soon to have all this back-to-back? But knowing if an applicant, applicant is going to be putting in an application for this as EMO, they're going to see those two dates right, as soon as they apply. So they should have that put in and put that on their calendar right now to say, we should know that we should be, tentatively be ready to interview on the 6th and 7th. So to say that we're going to send out an invitation to interview on the 4th and then have them, let them be here the 6th, is short-term, but they should be anticipating that they will be interviewed anyways on those days. So that's really the only kind of tight timeframe that we have right now.
You are doing those throughout the United States?
It'll be going out to everybody.
Okay, sure.
What are the channels that we're using to communicate now?
We are going to be, so CDE and the state already has had multiple people contacting them, saying that they're interested. So we're going to put it on the state listserv, which actually goes nationally. The Rocky Mountain Bit website, which is also national. You basically click on different items, so education, curriculum pieces. Then anybody who is interested in that will automatically get an email to see our RFQ. We're also going to advertise it in the newspapers. We're going to send it out to those who have already contacted us that are interested. If there's any other ways that we can think of to get it out there, we're going to send it out. Maybe that means a national newspaper, an online newspaper, or something like that, that we could send it out to, we'll look at those.
Have, have we asked what CDE can do to help us broadcast it? Because I, I think that's a very reasonable ask for us to.
Absolutely. CDE has been more than willing to help us in any way they possibly can. So outside of the listserv, we'll reach back out to them and see if there's any other options.
Sean, can I interject one thing?
Sure.
One, one last document that I'd like to pass out. It's hot off the press. This is a copy of all of the feedback that came, in English and Spanish, that came out of Saturday's public deliberation. So everything that's up on the wall outside has collapsed into this document here. So you'll, by reading through this document, you'll, you'll really see what's on the minds of our stakeholders.
John, and Sean, may I add that I know what you're, you're going through. The RFQ process, and I believe you're going through the drafts. You've shared those drafts with the Colorado Department of Education. They gave you some suggestions and possible modifications. So when we were doing this, it wasn't just Adams 14. It's being looked at by also the Colorado Department of Education. They, I saw the red lines, and then I believe you made those modifications in this last one that you're, you're.
So that, yeah, that's what we're going to talk about next here, is that process. So this was, again, just printed off about 45 minutes ago. And this other page, it says, "Updated RFQ feedback implemented" in here. Kind of breaks down the bigger pieces from what we've had. So we've had, now had community feedback, we've had CDE feedback. John's had a chance to look at the RFQ, and he's given some feedback. So now we kind of have everybody's first glance at the RFQ, the draft of the RFQ for community, CDE, and legal feedback. We'd love to see if we could get more board feedback, more feedback from John. And then kind of, hopefully, we'll show this and bring this to tomorrow's next meeting to show the community that we did listen to everything. We took all their feedback and have implemented a lot of it. A lot of the community feedback was actually already in here. So a lot of those big pieces that they want to see, their feedback, was already in here. And maybe we just tweaked a couple, a little bit of the language to make sure it was specifically what they wanted. But a lot of the same items from all the different groups were in here. We added back the recommendations. So John will be sending this back to you electronically, too, for you to review. But our goal is to take this to the community meeting tomorrow. Let them get a chance to, to see that we did implement their, their feedback. Hopefully, we can't have until Thursday to get any more feedback. And Friday, we would like to post the RFQ.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, under the state board's order, they only have to approve the selected management partner. We don't technically have to get the RFQ approved by the state board?
Correct. We do not. They, they have asked if we could send it to them before, just as a, not a good gesture.
Courtesy, yeah, sure.
So probably sometime Thursday, we'll send that to them, too. I did talk to Lisa specifically. She said, you know, we don't necessarily want to send it through the same process that she did initially with this one. She just kind of wants to go through a one-through, make sure everything's in there. Just make sure we're communicating with that, keeping the lines open. So we did change a little bit of the rubric, put more emphasis on the scope and on the background. And then we changed the references to just yes or no, to say, "Do you have, actually have references or not?" Obviously, when we get to the final three, we'll be calling all those references to make sure that they do have quality and they have the expertise that they've gone through this previous. But as far as narrowing it down to top three, they don't feel like you should give five points, 10 points, just because you put a reference on, on the application.
Sean, is it, so the weightings that you have on there now, is that, that encompasses Lisa's, CDE's feedback, right?
Correct, it does. So some of the big changes kind of going through is that we did change it to Lead Management Partner Organization. We made sure we had all the ELL, OCR items in there, Leadership Development. Adjusted the timeline.
Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. On the amendment clause thing?
What was it?
The lead management issue that's kinda been back and forth. Is CDE okay with that phrasing?
They, I don't know that they've seen the most recent one with that.
Well, it's a little, it's a little awkward. I mean, I don't think there's anything that's wrong, which has always been my perspective on this, right? The statute uses the phrase, you know, uses the term partners. Partner is in the state board's order. I know that some of the state board members, I suspect, feel like that doesn't, isn't an accurate characterization. I, you know, I remember Jay Goff made a comment about that during a discussion we had at the meeting last week. But, you know, legally, it's a correct term, right? It just sounds a little lead management partner organization. I don't know. I would make sure you talk with Lisa about that. It shouldn't be a big deal.
From what I gathered from Lisa, they aren't gonna get too much more detailed or make any too many more recommendations in this. They just kinda wanna make, don't sure, check it, see it one more time before we officially send it out.
Well, I just, I think you should think about, this is a good point to be consistent, you know? Cause there's been a lot of used EMO, used external, you know, I don't know, it's been back and forth. So, if this is the one you settled on, great, but I don't know how board members, how you all feel about it, but you might be using the phrase for, you know, the next four years.
Yeah, cause I always see you as EMO.
What is, under state law, what's the actual term?
External management organization.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how we were introduced to it.
Yeah.
The way Lisa's put that training that we're having, that was about a year ago.
I think they, I think CDE...
Do you? It's strange, because that's all we knew. It was when we were having Randy and Lisa and...
Management partner sounds better, but I don't know whether to go with that or stick to the laws.
Here's what the statute says, "That a private or public entity with the agreement of the school district serve as a lead partner in the management of the school district." You know, it doesn't say EMO. You could, it's fair. The word it does use is management and partner.
Lead partner.
Or lead management partner.
In the order, actually.
I think either is fine. Will the, folks that are responding to the RFQ, will they receive...
Yeah, I do.
...the state board order as well as the OCR agreement? Cause those are two critical pieces.
Whoever is it all applied. Yeah, so there's a list of other documents that we wanna put out when we post the RFQ. We're gonna put the state order with it. We're gonna give a lot of background detail of Adams fourteen. I think there's a link already in here. I think it does, yeah. So there is already on page three, or back on the exact state order on there. But there's some other documents that I can add to this. So, whoever applies has as much detail as possible of what we're looking for specifically. You know, part of the, the videos that we just showed, to kinda show them what process we've been going through. There's a couple of videos like that that took place, so they can see how we got to this point.
How about just management?
Let's, yeah. Did you say the term was gonna be?
Well, I don't know.
Suggestions?
Management partner, I'm fine with that.
Are you fine?
Yeah.
Dave, are you fine with changing it to manager partner?
What's that?
Management partner, calling the external management organization the management partner.
We just have to be consistent where we're...
Right.
Talking in public that, you know...
Yep.
See, now they, they use EMO and they have a term.
You can stick with EMO. There's nothing wrong with that word.
I don't, I don't, I like management partner, actually.
I think it's more inclusive.
Yeah.
That's where we go. Management partner.
I think just management.
Management, because they are gonna manage.
Under section three, this is a question for both Sean and John. I'm wondering if we spell out what those limitations in the constitution and statute are, right? So we say, they're responsible for operating the districts and, operating the district and exercising all formal decision-making authority, subject to limitations. Maybe we actually spell out what those are, so that they're aware. I don't, and, it's not anything that I'm willing to die on, I'm just curious.
Well, it's kind of a tough one, because, I'll put it this way. I made that same suggestion for the state board's order, but they didn't wanna change it. And they wanted to keep it vague. You know, there's a lot of details that have to be ironed out during the contracting process. But constitutionally, it's not complicated. It's the local control clause, that's easy to spell out. Statutory...
It's a little murky.
Well, there's a lot of things. And there's a ton of things.
Right.
And so, to John's point, too, this has come up a lot, about how detailed do we want the RFQ to get? Because really, in the interview processes, really, we want this to kinda be vague. We know we need curriculum instruction, we have to hit the eight EMO, or the orders in there. But in the contract, and in the interviews, when we really wanna dig into that detail, that contract has to be as detailed as possible to get down and make sure that this is what we're holding you accountable for. You know, in the RFQ, we're kinda just saying, letting everybody know, these are the eight orders, here's a couple other things that we really wanna pay attention to, and then we're gonna get to the detail during the interview, during the contract, and nail down specifically what it is. And I think, you know, at the community meeting, that came up a lot, too, when everybody...
It ain't that misleading, though. I mean, you want it upfront to let them know this is what A, B, and C is, instead of looking at C, D, and E.
Yeah, so I don't think it's as vague as just saying, "All we're putting in here is those orders." I think we do get to a little bit more detail, and we do have, you know, the exact twenty page order that's in here, and kinda get into a little more detail.
But maybe one of, maybe the three that you talked to or interviewed left out things that's vague enough that they just made it past the interview phase, and don't have the qualifications. Then you left somebody that had the qualifications that didn't see the correct order. I've been speaking for myself. If you show everything and show what they need to do upfront, then a person that don't have everything is not gonna say, "Oh, I'm gonna bypass this, this street and see if I go around it." If they don't have it, you see it upfront, and you know what they have and don't have, and then that alleviates the waste of time, and then they can drop out. That's just how I think it is. You know, if you're going for a job interview, you wanna, you're gonna put everything in the job, which, the description, what you want. You're not gonna put vague stuff in the job interview for the person. And then, then when they come interview, you're gonna hit them with, "Oh, do you have this, this, and this? This is, this is a job interview. This is what we looking at, is job interviews for these EMPs, management partners organizations." And we need to be upfront of A through Z, what we looking for. As Mr. Moreno said in three, then, I think everything should be there. That's just my opinion.
Under section two, number three, and again, none of this is stuff I am willing to die on. In the third line, I'm wondering if we steer clear of the word reform. That's a charged, critically-charged word in the education community, so maybe we just say, "And efforts towards stakeholder engagement," instead of reform efforts.
Because we reforming the stakeholders, right? We doing that. That's what, that's what we doing now, right? So that, that line really don't even have to be in there.
Sean?
Yes?
If we, give you five more minutes, what else would you need from the board? More than Jonathan?
If you have any more feedback on this, also, you know, the next steps, tomorrow we're meeting, we're gonna go over the application process and talk a little bit more about what that next step looks like. So, you know, how does the process look like when we get twenty applications for the management partner, and how are we gonna narrow it down? So we do have a state EMO rubric that they give us. We need to kinda tweak that a little bit to our specific RFQ a little bit, and what the plan is to use that, but, you know, how are we gonna...
Right, cause they did give us just specific guidelines. Yeah, guidelines.
And that needs to be completed before you start receiving any applicants, any proposals.
Correct. So, we need to figure out who's gonna be a part of the team that narrows it down. We still need to, tomorrow, we're gonna talk about what questions are we gonna start to ask the EMO during those interview processes? And then really, finally, who is gonna be a part, what does the community interview section look like for those final three applicants? And what does the rubric, how is it weighted in that process to get to our final EMO?
Do you have proposals on any of that right now, or...
We, I've heard feedback on three different, the interview process. Typically, how you do an RFQ is we have five people as part of that, and then you decide. This is anything but typical of a normal RFQ, specifically because it's never been done in the state. The state is saying they want more community feedback, so there are multiple options out there. You know, probably the, the most feedback that we've heard is that if we can get a large community feedback through the applications that we've had go out there that don't represent just one area, one just, if they're all teachers, obviously that's not a good mix of who we want to interview. If they're all students, that's not who we want. But if it's a good mixture of applications that we get, of students, teachers, community members, leadership here, board members, that represent everybody, similar to what we had this Saturday, it was a good mix of kinda everybody. I think we could do just one big community interview, and that would make the...
Similar to our community.
I agree. That's one of the other things, is that we've talked about, is that we don't want anybody that lives outside of Adams fourteen community to be a part of that.
Cause I was looking at some of the pictures, and they're not...
There were, so, so we're very aware of that, is that they have to be Adams fourteen community members. We don't want somebody that lives in Denver, or Aurora, or someone, somebody up north to be a part of that that has a decision, or a big group that has a specific agenda that they wanna push for. So, we're gonna talk through that again tomorrow.
Well, you know, didn't they, didn't, I think they did, on the DAC, they had an application process that they had to go through to be on that committee. Is there, maybe we can use the same kind? They just have to fill it out?
Yeah, so, so we did send the application out already, and we've been getting, I don't know, how many you've gotten back so far, John?
Oh, I don't know, probably have somewhere between twenty-five and thirty, something like that.
So we'll talk about the feedback tomorrow, once we get all the applications in, and if it finds out that we wanna do, use those thirty people and still go with a nine-person interview, and kinda have them weighted a specific way, we'll move forward with that. But we really wanna get the feedback from everybody tomorrow's meeting, and then we'll find out as to that.
It sounds like one of the things you're hinting at is there could be a bigger screening group from, separate from an interview team that would be a little small. I don't know if that's what you're getting at, but I think if, what would probably be helpful from the board is, you know, there's a couple of big questions that still need to be answered right about this process. So we need to get those written out.
Section, in section three, scope of services. I don't, I don't see the chief academic officer in here. I don't see HR, recruiting, and local board management operators needed for individual schools. I don't know who that is recommending. Yeah, I'm a...
Three are things that EMO's...
Right, but supposed to do, you should still have the chief academic officer in here. You should have HR in here, because that's part of their department. Why do we need a chief academic officer and HR if the EMO is coming in here to do their jobs? That's how I feel. And I'm looking at evaluation, district policies, amendments, revision, insurance. None of them is sitting here at this table discussing things that need to be done, what an EMO's supposed to do, scope of service. So, that's what I'm looking at. I don't see HR. I don't see this chief academic officer sitting in here. I don't see...
Darcy's here.
Darcy ain't, I, I'm talking about that gentleman. Who is the guy that we didn't, we didn't send up to two conferences? That's HR. Darcy do more legal. Am I right or wrong?
I'm the executive director of HR, Legal, and Risk Management, but Brian is who you're talking about, Dr. Brian Childress.
Thank you. That's, that's what I'm, thank you.
He's the director of HR.
Right. Recruiting and Retainment Personnel, Including Responsibly Formally Entrusted to Teacher Administration Placement. That's what I'm talking about. I don't see the individuals that an EMO is coming in here to help in here, that need to have, to be in this room, or sitting down talking with Sean and John about this RFQ.
So similar to the concerns that Harvest is raising, I think the only thing that's missing for me in this RFQ, given that turnaround is such a huge issue in this district, or turnover, the EMO's experience with talent recruitment and retention, I think that has to be in here.
I have an idea, I can, I can suggest it on Friday.
Thank you, Sean and John. And if our board members have any questions, you know, we're gonna have to go to executive session, because you've got some things you gotta take care of, but you can always follow up with John or Sean, Paul and Monica, you can answer the questions.
And I think, well, as we move forward, we're gonna continue to keep our intentions on inclusion and lowering anxiety, raising trust, and I think we're off to a great start in doing just that. And I look forward to a very positive process.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
I just wanted to clarify that although all the people that Mr. Thomas mentioned that aren't in the room, these two gentlemen haven't put this together on that one.
No.
It's been info from everyone.
It's not...
They're just not necessarily in the room at this time.
I didn't see them in that video. I haven't, I haven't seen them sitting in here now. I'm saying that we are doing, they are doing their job, and if, it's a term management, management partner, whatever y'all wanna say it, it's about curriculum. We doing curriculum, HR, and are they putting the input? I don't see them sitting around this table giving us their input about what should be in this RFQ. That's what I'm, getting to my point. You know, if, if, if the chief academic officer was here, and things, we wouldn't be in the situation we was in. If the turnover wouldn't be high, I don't see none of them people in this room right now. That's what I'm referring, I don't, I don't know who's sitting does this. I'm not here twenty-four seven.
And it's not, to answer your question, they're not here right now, but I can tell you, Harvest, every morning, first thing we do, eight fifteen to, whether it be an hour, an hour and a half, our whole executive team meets, we sit down with Sean and John, everyone has input. They were chosen to come here to present to you, but we have a process where we include our whole executive team. They're having input on every stage of this process.
The only last thing I would suggest, or it's more of just a question, I found it interesting that Adam City wasn't specifically called out in this RFQ. And I know this is a little vague with what the state board ordered, but it's very possible that this EMO will also have responsibility for Adam City. So shouldn't we highlight that in some way in the RFQ?
I thought they had one after this one started, then they have one that they... After this one's hired, then they have one that they could consider for the high school.
But they also could just do it themselves.
Right.
The state board wasn't really clear on it, I just, I'm wondering, like...
Well, they did state it in there, that they had the one for the whole district that we're dealing with like now, but they didn't include the high school, because depending on how the EMO is then, then we would discuss, we could bring them in.
But I think the EMO will be expected to make recommendations for the high school, so we should make sure we, they know that through the RFQ.
I put a little bit of things like that kinda language, so a lot of this...
School and district, yeah.
Yeah, but it could be...
EMO motion too.
We're, we're doing a motion to close the exec session, the study session, I mean,
go in and go into exec session.
Like one of the things that you said, there is that, maybe when we have the break on, then they're talking amongst themselves, I think there should be a table to sit up with the Spanish speakers, that's what we do, but I mean, to continue to do it.
Okay, so I'm closing the study session.
Because I think when they speak, they're only...
So, Ron and John.
And we're making a motion to go into exec session for CRS twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, four B, legal advice, board to conference with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters.
I move to proceed into executive set, executive session pursuant to the statutory citation listed by the chair.
Can I have a second?
Check it.
Roll call.
Hi.
Mrs. Quintana?
Hi.
Mr. Moreno?
Hi.
Mr. Moreno?
You know, a lot of times, me, myself...